Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 18th, 2022 Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. Please be reminded that these meetings are audio/video recorded. My name is Becky Stanton and I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions with Jeff.
Jeff Boe.
Dustine Puma.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent. Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Tannara.
Ryan McMahon.
Danielle Athanas.
Rob Mullin.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the approval of meeting minutes. I'll seek a motion to approve the October 4th, 2022 School Committee Meeting Minutes and the October 4th, 2022 Executive Session Minutes.
Still moving.
Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
Still moving. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 7:00. Citizen time? It looks like we don't have any citizens here today. And moving on to correspondence, Dr. Flanagan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think this might be a first in Tingsboro history that we actually received a donation from South Dakota, a longtime friend of Liz Gill. In honor of Liz Gill's retirement, her 22 years of service to the Tingsboro Public Schools, has donated $100 to the Tingsboro Public Schools to be used in any manner that we so choose, just to recognize Liz. So it was very nice of Sue Bell to do that.
Awesome. It's very nice.
And the other piece of correspondence that's in your drive tonight is the 2022 Adopt a Family kickoff letter. For those of you who don't know, it's over 40 years that this program's been going on in this community, and it's an opportunity for the schools to come together and really rally and support families' need in our community. Ms. Lewenzic, Ms. Fairbanks, and Ms. Malus in the district do a great job running this program. At the end, we coordinate with the Tingsboro Police who assist us with the delivery, but this really is a program that the schools have taken on and really, we're very proud of what we do. And to me, it speaks volumes and it talks about the character of our community. So another great program that's out there, so you'll start to see more information come out about that. Please, if you can give in any way and support our families, please do so.
Great. Personnel? There's none at this time. And we do not have share the success tonight. So moving on to the Subcommittee update for the Technology Subcommittee. Is there a chair for that committee?
Yes, there is. So we had our first meeting today, and we were able to go through with Mr. Piper, the three, start of his three-year technology plan that we're hoping we'll be able to bring to the full committee in December of this year, with a little bit more of a detailed, fleshed-out agenda, and really looking at our focal focus points being anything from asking, excuse me, access to technology, network infrastructure, technology, professional development, technology integration and literacy, and overall communication. So we are meeting again in the end of November, just to make sure that everything looks good. We'll be able to button it up and then present it to you with hopes of having approval from this committee.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, Dr. Flanagan for the MSBA update.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We'll jump right into the slide deck. So the first one is just a reminder of upcoming meetings. Tomorrow night, we have a School Building Committee meeting. November 1st is our next School Committee meeting. At there, I had a placeholder in there for technology, but it sounds like that'll be in December, so we can just push that out, which makes perfect sense. We'll do a Strategy for District Improvement update at that time. Mr. Woodlock has confirmed with the First Respondents that they will be coming to the November 15th School Committee meeting. Not exactly sure who's coming. We know that Representatives of the Police and Fire will be here for that. And then, as you know, December 6th, that's when Mr. Messina takes center stage, and we begin to talk about budget timeline and budget development process. And I know that Mr. Messina will be reaching out to the Budget Subcommittee at some point in the next couple of weeks to start figuring out what that calendar looks like. So that's what's coming down the pike for us in terms of meetings. True North, Mr. Woodlock's gonna talk a little bit about that. When we get to Item 8B, you're gonna see our Strategy for District Improvement in action in our schools. So we're excited about that. So we'll continue on to the MSBA Building Project Update. So we've had a couple of meetings over the past few weeks with the Leftfield and J C J to talk about where we are with the project. We, I told you at the last School Committee meeting, we reviewed the phasing of the fence line and what that's going to look like. They're looking to get that fence installed sometime November, December. There's a meeting tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday at 4 o'clock to talk about coming out for selective demolition in the old gym to look at hazardous materials and do some preliminary testing there. Tomorrow night, at the School Building Committee meeting, J C J and Leftfield will present pretty much a high-level six-month permitting review process. And from my understanding and preliminary meetings with J C J, it really looks like the two active boards in town that'll be engaged in a lot of this work will be the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. So they've worked out a six-month timeline as to what that looks like. There'll be several public hearings, public meetings that we'll attend as well, but with the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. So the School Building Committee will get that kind of high-level discussion tomorrow night, as well as the fence line discussion as well. So the project is moving along. It's exciting to say, you know, October 27th, they're actually gonna be here doing something. And then the fence is gonna go in and it's gonna become more real. I did meet this past week with Mr. Ogden, Mr. Pollitt, and Mr. Semantelli to really talk about how the fence line will impact our operations and our traffic flow, and we're ready for that and we'll handle it, and I don't see any headaches there at this time. So we're excited that's moving along. I will add one additional piece. I was on a Commissioner's call today, Commissioner Riley called today, and I know that there's been discussion at both the MASSS and MASC level with the state regarding funding, regarding the concern for funding. A lot of projects that are in the queue right now are seeing a significant increase in costs, so they're hopeful that the state will be able to do something to address those projects that have already been approved at this time. So stay tuned for that. I don't know what's gonna come out of that, but the fact that everyone's kind of talking about it right now is, I hope, a good sign. So I'll keep you informed as we go along there.
I just, just a question regarding, is there a communication plan to families of middle school and high school students as this project starts to impact this campus and this campus starts to become a construction site?
Yes. So it really won't be a construction site, per se, until February. They want to drive the stakes in now, the fence in now before the ground freezes, but we won't start seeing gates go up and actual trucks and things like that come on until February or March. So nothing's going on yet, but you will see, you know, for the Thanksgiving football game, we could see fences that are installed that really won't impact anything. We'll still have walk-through and access. But once we put the gates up in March or February or March, then that really becomes an off-limits area. So we will communicate that accordingly to parents.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And that's all I had for Building Project Update.
Great. 8B?
Mr. Woodlock. Thank you. So as I do each School Committee meeting, I wanted to update you on progress we're making on our SDI. And what I did was ask the Principals of each of the schools to share, you know, small little victories that they're having, progress that they're making in terms of their, you know, strategic priorities or key actions that relate directly to the SDI. And so the first one you're looking at here on our screen is an example of one of our elementary schools and our youngest learners that are engaging in a class pledge each and every day. And the class pledge was written to kind of enhance students' social and emotional well-being by focusing on coping skills and strategies and a growth mindset. So I don't know if you can read it. So I'll go ahead and read it. "Because I am an important member of this class, I will take responsibility for myself, my classroom, and my schoolwork. I will treat others as I would like them to treat me. I will always try to do my best, or remember that I am a special, unique, and creative person." So really trying to promote, you know, personal well-being within our, each and every one of our students at the youngest level. And this is related directly to Strategic Priority 1.1 in our SDI. In the middle school, Mr. Pollitt shared a couple of examples with me, and you'll see up top is one representing building staff capacity, which is 3.2 on our strategic priorities. And this is part of our ongoing and pretty intensive math professional development and support and coaching that we're working with Leslie University with. And so you see an illustration there of staff working with Kit Golan and Hillary Kreisenberg from Leslie University, who have been in regularly and will be in again this week. Secondly, something that gets talked about a lot, and this is 1.2 on our strategic priorities, is creating, you know, targeted interventions for students who may be falling behind. But one other part of that is extensions, and that kind of gets left behind sometimes or forgotten. And so this is a great example of a student in art class, excuse me, that definitely was demonstrating significant ability and interest in performing kind of greater works of art than they're able to do in a typical art class, and she was given the opportunity to create this gorgeous mural that's in TMS now. So just really an amazing thing when kids are given the opportunity to do things to show what they're capable of. And last but not least, excuse me for one second. Sorry about that. Key Action 1.2A in our high school SDI talks about building capacity within our students for social and emotional learning, building up coping skills and communications, and really focusing on growth mindset and mindfulness. And so they started these dialectical behavior therapy groups, where basically giving students the opportunity to come together and talk about these things, work on strategies. And it was really meant to be, you know, let's see how this goes. And started with one group, and now they're up to four groups already. So students were really interested in getting together and talking about some of these things and having a place to share, you know, what they're going through and with a counselor and a trained professional, you know, talk about strategies for when you're feeling a certain way, or just allowing kids to be relaxed and have a place to talk and decompress. So they're really excited about this program and the progress they've made in a very short span of time.
I'd just like to remind the committee that social worker position was something that this committee prioritized during the budget season last year as we talked about social and emotional needs of kids moving forward. So it's great to see the fruits of that position paying off for our kids. So any questions about the SDI in action?
No, this was a great update. I do have a comment on that artwork. That was some amazing artwork.
Beautiful, isn't it?
Yeah, congratulations to that student. That was incredible artwork.
Will that be able to be saved? Because the middle school's gonna be knocked down.
No, it will not. It's on the windows to the main office. It's all windowpane.
But we have a photo of it.
We have a photo, okay.
We can make an ink poster for it, yeah.
Print it out. Nice poster.
Any questions for Dr. Flanagan or Dr. Woodlock? No. All right. Moving on to 9A, Special Education Update and Trends.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're gonna do things a little bit different this year. Every year, well, actually, we haven't done it in a couple years, we've done it since 2019. But Ms. Lewenzic, our Director of Student Services, Dr. Riley, Sped Facilitator at the Elementary School, and Mr. Evans, Sped Facilitator at Norris Road, they're here to present. And this year, to show a little bit about what's going on in the district, they're really gonna focus on a comparison between 2019 and 2020 and talk about where we are today and the current state of special education. I know we spend a lot of time, usually during the budget season, talking about out-of-district transportation, out-of-district costs, and those types of things. We can still have that conversation in a few months with Mr. Messina and Ms. Lewenzic if need be, but today really is kind of to capture where we are as a special education department today and kind of do an overview from there. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Lewenzic, and they can take it from there.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the time to provide updates within the Special Education Department. Tonight, we'd like to provide you with some information on the uniquenesses of our in-district special ed programming and the evolving level of need of all of our students in comparison to 2019, as Dr. Flanagan stated, to similar data today in 2022. So we'll be talking about the special education process and just doing a bit of an overview there to kind of bring us all to the same place, a comparison of students receiving the special education services versus enrollment, and then really spending the bulk of our time talking about level of need, comparison with level of need within the levels here at the elementary, middle, and high school, dipping a bit into out-of-district programming and just getting an overall feel there, along with specialized programming and some overview and definition, and sort of, you know, completion with considerations as we talk about the present and future, and certainly some things to celebrate as well. So before we get into the data, it's important to understand a bit about the complexity of the special education process and the mandated timelines. The process is initiated with a child being referred for special education services. Once this occurs, the child is evaluated within a 30-day, 30-school-working days by special education staff in the area or areas of suspected disability. It's important to highlight these evaluations can range in time from three to six hours per evaluator, depending on the number of evaluations and the level of participation by the student and the, as challenging as it might be for the student. So as you can imagine, if you're looking at a child with higher needs, this is gonna be a more intensive time period over the evaluation period, as well as our younger learners. Once the testing is completed, the team meets within 45-school-working days, and the parent guardian is part of that team, of course, for eligibility determination and the development of the IEP. And lastly, the implementation of services are implemented once the district receives consent for the parent and guardian. As we take a look at this slide, it's important to consider where we are currently in district. And you'll note here that there's been an increase of 15.9% to 21.7% over the past three years. Similarly, as we break it down by levels at the high school, if you don't mind moving that slide for me, we've seen an increase from 10.8% in 2019 to 16.1% today, while at the middle school, a slight increase here today with 20.2% of students on IEPs in comparison to 19.5 in 2019. As we shift to the elementary school, you'll see here that this has been the most substantial increase from 17% of students receiving special education services in 2019 to 25.5 today. Although these increased percentages are important, it's the level of need that presents the most significant challenge and where it's crucial that we provide some context to better understand these complexities.
As we think about levels of need, we need to consider the primary setting or where students receive their special education services, the type of staff who provide services to the student, for example, general education teachers, related service providers, special education teachers, occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, teachers of the visually impaired, nurses, as well as the percentage of time that students receive their special education services. It's also important to note that students with high needs typically require more instructional support and related services in order to access the curriculum.
When we're looking at level of need, it's broken down into low, moderate, and high levels of need. When we're talking about low-level needs, a lot of those services are happening within the general education classroom. When we move along to the moderate level of need, our students within this level of need tend to have more complexities. A lot of the services that they have may occur in the special education setting, or they may occur in the regular ed setting. As we get to higher needs, these are students that have substantially more level of need, they have substantially more time within our specialized programs, as well as services from our related service providers, that could be our OT, PT, speech, vision, and et cetera. All of our out-of-district students also account for our high-level-of-need students.
And finally, one of the important things we need to look at is service delivery. And this is the support that students require from a special education professional. And the service delivery can range from a consult model to individual and small-group pullouts. And where students require support and related services can range from receiving support in the inclusion setting, in the general education environment, to some students who require a substantial portion of their day outside of the general education setting in a smaller group setting.
As you look more closely here at, again, Tingsboro Public Schools in-district level of need, today, 25% of our students are at a low level of need in comparison to 75% of our students that have high or moderately, moderate levels of need, which account for a considerable allocation of resources that involve but are not limited to classroom accommodations, programming changes, paraprofessional support, and multiple related services.
When we look at Tingsboro High School's level of need, we've seen a significant increase in the amount of students receiving a moderate level of need. It's just under 50% of our student population. This number really hasn't been impacted by new referrals. We've seen a trend since 2019 with less students applying to greater Lowell, or less students being accepted, as well as students transitioning back to Tingsboro High School. Another thing that I think accounts for this increase is we've had, I think, a consistent level of students transitioning in from other schools that have been moving into town while we haven't had students transitioning out. You can go to the next slide. Regarding the Tingsboro Middle School level of need, things have stayed relatively consistent. The one thing I do really want to point out here is our high level of need. Our high level of need has gone from zero to three students, but I really want to point out that our students within that high level of need, these are students that require significantly more services, they receive their instruction within a specialized program, will need access to speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, teachers of the visually impaired, require paraprofessional support, and access a modified curriculum.
As we look at the elementary school, you'll see a significant increase across all three levels of need, but what's really important to point out is that we've seen an 86% increase in the number of students that require a high, or have a high level of need. And as a result, we're supporting more and more students that require a majority of their program in a substantially separate program. At this time, almost 25% of our identified population are requiring substantially separate program, which is a significant increase from 2019. In order to meet that need, we've created additional substantially separate programs. And Mr. Woodlock, if you change the slide. Just a little context around substantially separate programs. So these are typically self-contained classrooms that are outside of the general education setting. They're designed to meet the individual needs of the students while still allowing for some integration opportunities in the inclusion setting. One thing that we've seen with some of our youngest learners is that they require more time outside in the substantially separate programming, and so looking at reverse inclusion opportunities, where we bring some of our general education students into our specialized programs to provide peer opportunities, is something that we've seen be more of a requirement over the last several years.
So this slide represents our existing and new programs currently in operation at all levels. As you can see, we continue to have Bridges programs at the middle and high school level. When referring to our Bridges program, we are talking about programming that meets the needs of our most complex students. Students within our Bridges program typically fall within the moderate-to-high-level-of-need category and require increased supports from related service providers and target transitional skills. Students from our high school Bridges program typically move on to 18 to 22 programming.
At the elementary school, you'll see that we continued our existing Bridges programs with our lower Bridges and upper Bridges programs. We've also had to create new programs for students. The first program we created was our, is our Stripes program that meets the needs of our younger students who require social-emotional programming throughout their day. These students are in kindergarten through second grade, and this program has the ability to provide inclusion support to students, but also a substantially separate setting for when the students are requiring that amount of support. At the same time, we've created an upper elementary social and emotional program to support students in our upper elementary school from grades three to five. We need social-emotional supports available to them throughout the day while still accessing their grade-level content. Similar to our Stripes program, these supports are offered both in the inclusion setting as well as in a substantially separate setting when needed. These programs are heavily supported by our special education teachers, as well as related service providers such as school counselors, occupational therapists, and speech-language pathologists. We've also seen a need for programming for students who require a significant amount of academic support to access the grade-level curriculum with significant modifications. These students are different than our Bridges students. They are able to access some of the grade-level content, but require a significant amount of small-group support in order to further their skills in these areas. At TES, we've historically had a lower and upper elementary school Bridges program, as I said before, but given the needs of our youngest learners, those in preschool, we've had to create a preschool Bridges program that is meeting the needs of our youngest learners with significant high level of need.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, just to give a little bit more context here, when you're looking at the numbers to the far right and looking at the programs, these are not interchangeable. So the students that are listed on your far right are on, are in those separate programs, so they're not jumping between programs at all, just to make sure everybody understands
As we look to the present and also the future, I want to dive a little bit deeper into why we had to create a preschool Bridges program. As we consider where we are today, our youngest learners and their level of need are increasingly growing. 33% of our youngest learners have disability of either autism or intellectual disability. And of those, 69% of those students are requiring substantially separate programming throughout their day and access to reverse inclusion opportunities. These are students whose disabilities are going to impact them throughout their lives and most likely will require programming from 18 to 22 as they move through the district. It's also important to note that our preschool referrals are very unpredictable and have really been increasing over the years. For example, last year, we did 25 preschool evaluations, and this year, we're on track to exceed that with 15 evaluations either completed or scheduled through the end of February. And that, given the level of need of our youngest learners, we do anticipate that this is something that the district will have to support throughout their entire time at TPS.
So looking at future considerations for the Norris Road campus, the Norris Road campus will need to be mindful of the programming and supports that will need to be in place as our students transition to middle and high school. Currently, our middle school and high school only house Bridges programs. As we look at the evolving needs at Tingsboro Elementary School and the increase in students with greater complexities, we need to be constantly mindful that our program on the Norris Road campus will need to evolve as students reach TMS and DHS.
And while it's our commitment to educate our students and their school community whenever possible, we need to be mindful of the out-of-district challenges and the unpredictability of these programs as well. Currently, out-of-district programs are experiencing significant staffing shortages and increasing needs across the state. You can imagine that they're hitting capacity much sooner than they had prior to the pandemic. So we're seeing that, as well as programming, programs closing across the state, which is also attributing to very lengthy wait lists when we do need to be looking at out-of-district programming for our students. In addition, recently, the Operational Services Division, which is OSD Pricing, is, that's the department within the state that's responsible for setting tuition rates, and that happens on an every fiscal year basis, and right now, that proposal is at 14%. This is a larger increase than we have ever seen, and we're hopeful that that is not where they set. And historically, just to put in perspective, we see about a 3% increase set by OSD each fiscal year. Just to, you know, give a little bit more information here, and I know we're not talking a lot about out-of-district tonight, but if you are wondering, we do currently have 22 students that are out-of-district. Those students run within public-day programs, private-day programs, and some within 365-day residential programs as well. And we have students that are currently in the pipeline that are, whether they're moving in or are coming through DCF and other agency, other agencies that we may very well need to be placing out, and that will increase that number. So just to kind of give you a little bit more of a flavor on out-of-district. So as you can see, the timing of developing more specialized programs has been instrumental and is truly something more that we're celebrating at this particular point. Flip that slide.
Some of the other things that we're celebrating is we're very happy to have a full-time BCBA at TES this year. This allows for more timely feedback and consistent feedback for teachers, as well as students, to support their behavior needs, while also allowing for frequent collaboration between the school counselors and the BCBA to meet ours social-emotional needs of the students.
Tingsboro Middle and High School have benefited greatly from contracting with a dedicated BCBA to meet the evolving behavioral needs of our students. This dedicated staff member has already had a positive impact on our teachers and programming for our students. In addition, as Mr. Woodlock had mentioned earlier regarding the SDI in action, we've had a positive impact from the school social worker on the Norris Road campus. This addition, as well as the hire of school psychologists over the last two years, have helped us to be able to provide a more wide array of social-emotional programming for our students. Our counseling teams, including our school counselors, psychologists, and social worker, have helped to establish DBT, dialectical behavior therapy, group offerings, which is the preferred method of therapeutic intervention, for which we have already programmed several groups at each school. Our counseling teams have also established groups to help students navigate anxiety, executive functioning, peer interaction, and friendships. The increase has also allowed for an increase in one-to-one and small-group counseling. The increase has also allowed for an increase in one-to-one and small group counseling services.
And finally, at TES, we're very happy for the return of a third counselor at TES. This allows for classroom levels each week at each grade level, as well as more social skills groups and individual counseling sessions that are available to our students.
So in closing, I'm proud of the dedicated and talented professionals we have working on behalf of the Special Education Department. We know that our children being educated in our community whenever possible is the best place for them. We thank you for your continued support and are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We'll open it up for questions.
Another question. Can you go back to the previous slide, please? So the preschool ages three to five, thirty-three percent are coming in with ASD or intellectual disability. How does this compare to previous years, and how does it compare across the state, across the country? Is this a trend, you know, nationwide, or is this something we're seeing more locally?
In terms of the percentage of high need from our preschoolers, we've definitely seen an increase in the level of need over the last several years, especially around, you know, the number of students diagnosed with autism. It's a spectrum, but these are students that require more significant support than I think that we're seeing than just typically, you know, nationwide might be diagnosed with autism. Especially with intellectual disability, I think we've seen an increase in the referrals with students with that profile, too. In addition, our medically fragile populations, so students that have more medical needs, are also increasing at our youngest levels as we get referrals to them, from them. So I think it's consistent with what we, when we talk to our neighboring districts, but it's, in terms of the level of need, I think it's an increase specifically in Tingsboro, too, over the last several years we've seen.
And I did a bit of a comparison just within the Merrimack Valley where we typically are, you know, looking at sort of our neighbors, you know, across and in front, and really within sort of that frame, within a high needs. If we're talking about our Chelmsford's, our Groton-Dumstabil, Westford, all of those fall slightly below us. What might be a little bit ahead in terms of percentage is Billerica currently and North Middlesex, and that would be by about a percentage point. So we're following in that higher range than we typically have year to year, and certainly we've found ourselves historically more towards the bottom tier of that, and we no longer are.
So these students with, you know, moderate to high need, the types of services I would imagine differ within that population. So, you know, we can, you know, kind of group them together, say, you know, this percentage is increasing, but within that, how many different types of services do we need and are we prepared for that?
That's a great question, and it's challenging to answer. Every student comes in with individual needs, as you just indicated. Some of our students, you know, will need only speech and language. Some will need speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, you know, the amount of time on that ranges as well from, you know, a potential of thirty minutes for, you know, thirty minutes within a weekly time period to two hours per day. So really dependent on the need of a student, and to your point, that does fall within moderate and high. So I don't want, you know, somebody within the community to be under the impression that high needs means related services. Related services falls within all levels, but certainly within moderate and high levels of need.
To answer your question a little bit more, I think what we're seeing is more and more students with, that require multiple services in order to access the curriculum, as well as students that are nonverbal. So they're requiring additional support through augmentative and alternative communication devices in order to have their needs and wants met. So that creates additional service and support that they're requiring. And I would say of our youngest learners in our preschool Bridges program and our lower elementary Bridges program, a majority of those students are accessing AAC devices, so alternative communication devices, in order to communicate with their teachers and their peers and demonstrate their learning.
Do we have enough of these devices?
We do.
I'm sure we could always use more.
Luckily, we partner very closely with Mr. Piper and the technology team and are able to kind of plan for that. But, you know, the preschool referrals are a little bit of an unknown. We only get a referral anywhere from three to six months before the child turns three, and when there are more complex cases that are coming our way, there's frequently additional assessments that we have to do. We also get a snapshot of a child, right? We do an evaluation, some observations. We take a lot based on the caregiver or any early intervention supports, but our youngest learners change frequently. So, you know, being flexible and being able to meet their needs is something that is constantly changing, that the teams are constantly assessing, and so we do have enough AAC devices at this time. Luckily, our tablet devices are pretty flexible, so as their communication needs change, we can kind of flex with the same device to a new program.
I have one more question, and I want to hog all the time. So all the, you know, percentages you gave of students needing services, if a student has an IEP but doesn't really need any extra services beyond that, is that sort of included in these percentages?
Yes.
Okay.
You would find them in that lower level of need tier.
Okay.
But absolutely.
Thank you. I think you guys are doing a tremendous job. I think most of us here hear the reputation of the speciality in this town, at least I do, so, you know, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Mine's more of a comment and a question, and it's, the level of students currently in our elementary school are going to be moving into the middle school over the course of the next three to five years, and then onto the high school, which is going to drive up the need, and I really think that we need to get a really good head start on preparing for that over the course of the next three to five years from a budgetary standpoint, from staffing levels, making sure that we have what we need in those facilities. Because currently, right now, I think our middle school is at the lowest levels of the three schools.
Yeah, I would look at it from our moderate level of need, so when, the majority of our students are, have a moderate level of need, but I think what we're seeing at the middle school is really, that's really trending towards a higher level of need, so we're starting to already see an increase in services.
And I think that can be reflected in the slides, in that we've created four substantially separate programs for the elementary schools in the past three years, four brand-new programs in the last three years. Those kids will remain in the Tingsboro public schools, and those programs will need to evolve and/or be created at TMS to support them when they get there. So, yeah, it's absolutely something we need to keep our eye on going down the road.
Good thing we have a new building coming.
And those new programs at the elementary school, as they, you know, mature into the middle school, I mean, we still may need to keep those programs at the elementary school. It's not to say that...
Oh, I would think so.
Yeah, I would anticipate that based on our youngest preschool referrals.
Yeah, right, okay.
Is there a percentage of students with, you know, early intervention and, you know, given the services at the elementary school that grow out of needing services? Or is it typically once you're in, you kind of need it?
There are. I mean, we find students no longer require special education services throughout the three levels here. I think it's important to note, though, that historically, the level of need of our preschool referrals who then kind of transition out have been a lower level of need. The referrals that we're receiving are students that have more significant levels of need and really lifelong disabilities, whether it be autism or an intellectual disability or some medically fragile profile that are going to be lifelong disability. So as they get older, those services will most likely need to continue, maybe not as great a need as when they're younger because they can start to generalize some of the skills, but I would imagine as they get older, and that we'll have that population of students that are going to require services from eighteen to twenty-two, just based on that lifelong disability and level of need.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee?
One quick question. Looking at, you know, the comment that you had made about the out-of-district cost really skyrocketing.
Yes.
Any of those programs that either are filling up faster than normal or things like that, is there any possibility or planning in place that we could be bringing any of that back in district, just given the costs are...
Bringing existing students back into district?
Yeah.
We're constantly looking at that. So I oversee our out-of-district program, and within the meetings, any and at all times in which we might be able to transition a student back, we're having those conversations. You know, typically, when we're looking at our collaborative settings, which is our lesser restrictive environments, that's where those conversations can happen a bit more naturally, but certainly, we are keeping our close eye on that for our private day programs as well as residential. And, you know, we have had success with students within our residential programs that have gone back into lesser restrictive environments, even collaborative settings, which has been great. So we're always pushing towards a least restrictive environment.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lewenzic, is this your team right here that supports this from an administrative standpoint?
From an administrative standpoint, yes.
Okay, all right.
And as much as we've talked about the evolving needs, there is a lot of behind-the-scenes, as you can imagine, with the preparation of meetings, the placements of meetings, the IEPs that go out, the, they are legal documents. We want to ensure that when they are being reviewed by a parent and by legal counsel and by advocates, which is happening every day within our district, that we have, you know, the document that's going out to meet the individual needs of our students, but is also exactly what we expect for it to be on paper and in place for the student when they walk in the classroom.
Right. Well, Dr. Flanagan, I'll turn it over to you for nine B.
Great, and I'm going to ask you folks to hang as we go through nine B in case any additional questions come up.
We can do that.
Thank you. So, you know, one of the things that's on the agenda tonight is to talk about the Special Education Administration's, Ministry of Structure. To your point, Madam Chair, this is our administrative structure right here. These three individuals support all of special education, the entire district, and I think one of the things that we're certainly concerned about is it comes at a cost. And I think one of the things, one of the contextual factors that we all need to understand is we benefit from the fact that we also have an elementary school principal who's the former director of special education in the district. So Mrs. Kavanaugh has been able to support Dr. Riley a significant amount of time this year, but that comes at a cost of her being able to be a principal and provide instructional leadership for the students. So if we could, we'll drive, jump into the slide deck. You know, I think one of the things, one of the things that we've talked about this year and we keep coming back to it is, we are getting back to teaching and learning. We're talking about instructional leadership, and that is the role of the building principal. And anytime that Mrs. Kavanaugh is pulled away to work on special education, that's seventy-five percent of the population that's not getting the instructional leadership that, to the maximized, I guess is the best way to put it. Certainly, there's always going to be conversations with all the administrators about every population of students, but we want to make sure that we are maximizing every opportunity we can for our kids. So the first slide I have is just a graphic of our strategic district improvement and remind everyone that that's what we come back to all the time. Yeah, why don't I take that? Love technology. There we go. So again, the focus and the push is to be instructional leaders, and that is incumbent upon the principal to assume that role. So as we just heard from the presentation tonight, we have, we have needs. We have needs on both campuses, but I think one of the things that was really glaring tonight is that twenty-five percent of our elementary school population receives special education services of some type. Sixty-nine percent of our three- to five-year-olds are in sub-separate programming, students that are identified. The amount of time, it's, it's, it's a lot, and it's overwhelming, and it's causing, it's causing some stress on that administrative team. Believe me, I don't, I don't take this lightly, the fact that we're requesting to add an administrator to the district. You know, I put a lot of thought into it, we had a lot of conversation about it, and we think about it, and I think as we think about the administrative structure in this district, it's something that we revisit every day. Mr. Messina and I talk every single day about the budget being a living and breathing thing. When we need to make changes or adjustments, we do that on the fly, but because this is an administrative position, I wanted to bring this to the school committee to get your approval for this. You know, we added a Bridges program three weeks ago because we saw the need. We address those needs all the time. So I just provide this slide for you for a little bit of context. Since two thousand sixteen, since two thousand sixteen, we've not added one administrative position in this district. Matter of fact, before that, in two thousand fifteen, we eliminated administrator from the elementary school because the need at the time was we needed a third counselor at the elementary school. So we prioritized that third counselor, and we hired that position. Ironically, when Dr. Riley was hired, he was coming in under the assumption that he would be doing grades one through five, and we would have a pre-K K coordinator. Well, that position never panned out, so Dr. Riley inherited pre-K to grade five. So we've always been flexible. We've always looked at the administrative structure in this district. I think back to two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, when we had one principal for the high school and middle school. You know, you can do it, but how effectively can you do it? And I can be honest with you and say you can't do it effectively because I was that person. You do two jobs to the best of your ability, but it doesn't maximize opportunities for kids. I look at our central office administrative structure. In two thousand five, there were fifteen full-time employees in central office. There are now nine. All those positions you see there have been assumed and taken on by somebody else. So let's go a little bit deeper and look at the Special Education administrative structure in this district. In two thousand eight, we had a director of special education, and we had four team chairs. We had five professionals dealing with special education. The team chairs were unit A positions in the teacher's contract, so they couldn't evaluate, but they were full-time employees working on special education. In two thousand nine, we eliminated those team chairs, and at the time, Dr. Lockwood said, "We need the team chairs to be more of administrative roles so they could oversee and evaluate and make decisions, programmatic and budgetary decisions." So he created special ed facilitators. So we had three special ed facilitators. In a matter of three years, they realized that that was untenable and that we needed somebody dedicated to the early childhood compersion, grade level. So they added an early childhood center dean. So in two thousand thirteen, we had four-point-three professionals working on special education. Additionally, I want you to know, in two thousand thirteen, the role went from director of special education to director of student services. So again, we put on another hat, and Mrs. Lewenzic oversaw nursing, counseling, 504s, and probably seventeen other things that I'm leaving out. So that position was compromised, so we just kept taking on, taking on roles and responsibilities. And to two thousand sixteen, when the full-time special ed facilitator on this campus went down to point-five, point-five. So Mr. Evans does high school, middle school, Dr. Riley does the elementary school, and Mrs. Lewenzic oversees this, I'm going to call it eighty percent of the time because the rest of the time is on counseling and 504 and social emotional learning and all the other responsibilities. So right now, we have two-point-eight administrators dedicated to our special education programming. We just saw, we saw the numbers go up, but that's just a number. It's the level of need that's gone up and the impact that has on programming and staffing and meeting, the amount of parental involvement, the diversity of the needs of our kids, the increased accountability that comes from the state. The position, as I see it today, October twenty twenty-two, is unsustainable. The model we currently have, administrative model we have for special education, is unsustainable. So I think about this school committee and what we've done. I think one of the, one of the best slides that we saw tonight was things to celebrate. The things we celebrated tonight were budgetary decisions, a programmatic decisions made by this school committee specifically to valuing the needs of our kids and really going back to our true north. What do our people need? How do we take care of our people? We need a social worker. We need that third counselor back. We need BCBA services on both campuses. That's something we prioritize through the budget because we believe collectively that was best for kids. This committee has always done that. In addition, since two thousand seventeen, we've added twenty content leaders in this district. Those are unit A teacher leadership positions because we believe in empowering teachers and giving teachers a voice. We've added a full-time math coach because we made a significant event years ago to the math program at the elementary school. We spent a lot of money, we wanted to make sure that was done effectively, so we made a commitment to that math coach position. Every time we implement new curriculum, we create stipends for teachers because we know it's additional work, but we want it done, and we want it done well. So we continually try to empower teachers and give them a voice and give them a seat at the table. So I don't take it lightly that I go to this next slide and say, without a doubt, we have a need and a priority right now, and I think it's my responsibility to bring it to this committee and say, "It's October. It doesn't make any sense to wait till the budget season, six months from now, and say, 'Let's plan for next year.'" We have eighty percent of our school year left. Can we do this position now? And I believe we can. And as I think about it, I would, I would encourage, if the committee supports it tonight, that we budget the position as its own position. that we budget the position as its own position next year for FY '24. But this year, I think the best move for the district, for our kids, is to pause filling a vacant administrative assistant position on this campus, as well as use some of the realized offset savings in our salary account from custodial maintenance positions, which you heard about last week, that haven't been filled since July. We should use that money now to bring in another Unit A position, another teacher in the district, and post for the special ed facilitator. I believe that our kids at the elementary school deserve more instructional leadership, and I think this is the way to get it for them. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions, or anyone can answer any questions you have at this time about this.
Dr. Flanagan, I more so have a comment. You know, you mentioned that Mrs. Lewenzick's also responsible for the social and emotional learning, and this is for all of our students. And so being at only 20% of her time is able to be focused on that as well as her other responsibilities, all of our students are suffering.
Fair.
Question for you. With the school year already underway, do you think you'll be able to attract the appropriate candidates for this role?
I think one of the good, so yes, I believe, I believe we will. I believe, I believe we have outstanding candidates in this district. I believe we have several outstanding teachers in this district that may apply for this position. That being said, we also have, we benefited from building the bench in this district, across the district, where we have power professionals that are certified teachers, that we just tap them, and they go into the classroom, and we do everything we can to support them, no different than three weeks ago when we created that Bridges class. That was a power professional who's working on their certification, got an emergency license, now ready in the classroom, supporting our kids. So I believe that we can do this. I think it's, and I think it's the right thing to do.
At this time, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve this position.
Second.
Present it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 700.
Excellent. Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank all of you for what you do for our kids every day.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you for presenting to us tonight. I know that, you know, you take 20 minutes to present to us, but there's so much more that goes into that presentation as well, so appreciate your time to keep us informed.
Thank you.
You're almost as good as the students who present.
Never. All right, moving on to finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For signing of bills, in your drive tonight is the list of 11 bill warrants that were presented to the committee tonight. Warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive. For signing of payroll, since the last time we reviewed payroll, there were two payrolls. Again, in your drive, the payroll of September 26th, as well as the payroll of October 10th. And that is it tonight.
All right, moving on to school committee discussion. Jeff?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Christine?
I'm all set.
Mr. Woodlock?
Thank you.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Rob?
Well, I would like to thank you all for coming out and giving us this presentation. I'd also like to thank you all, the many as a service you've given to this district. I've seen firsthand the results, and greatly appreciate them. And I would like to thank the administration for not only bringing to us as a group the needs of the district, but also a very well-thought-out and planned way of fulfilling those needs. So I greatly appreciate that. And that's all I have this evening.
I would like to echo everything that Mr. Mellon just said. I know I've sat in several meetings with Dr. Riley over the years, and I can speak firsthand to all of the wonderful things that your team does for our students. And so just thank you, and I'm glad we were able to support you tonight.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, you guys. Like I said earlier, you're doing an amazing job. Your reputation goes beyond the borders of this town. People know that Tingsboro is the best place for special education, so, you know, great job. Sort of to Dr. Flanagan's point about Sarah going, having responsibilities beyond special ed. I know during COVID, we had a weekly meeting that she chaired with, you know, I was on that. We had Board of Health, we had a teacher representative, and that was just one thing she was doing during COVID, during remote learning, on top of dealing with, you know, not dealing with, but managing special education. So, you know, that's just one piece that I was able to witness. I can't imagine how much else you're doing, so, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just echo all their comments. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It's very good. I think it's important that we recognize the special education teachers, power professionals, and related service providers. They're the boots on the ground every day doing phenomenal things with our kids, and I know that they make you three look good every day because they're outstanding. Couldn't, I couldn't echo what you say, Ryan, any more passionately, that we're known for our special education department because of the teachers in the classroom. So thank you to them for their hard work. We really appreciate it.
There is no need for executive session tonight, and so with that, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 700. We're adjourned.